Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Hall meeting for January 7, 2025. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to, again, please, call the roll.
Justy Dany?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Port?
Here.
Swansky? Absent, President Wallace.
Here. First item we have under the committee report is if anyone would like to address the board as our Town Hall portion, if anybody would like to address the board, kindly step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Anyone in here would like to address the board? Anybody online? Dominic? Would like to address the committee?
No one online.
Thank you, Dominic. Moving on to standing committee reports, first standing committee report for the committee is under Public Works and Golf Committee Chairman Dany.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item we have is the metro station at downtown center, landscape design update. Dan, you want to just take this?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Dany. Tonight, we're going to go over to 60% design for the downtown streetscape improvements, which, if you remember, is the Depot Museum, the area east of Oak to the metro station, the town center, and the sidewalk along the south side of Railroad and the west side of Main Street. I've got today Bob Mitchard and Jim Emilio from Christopher Burke and Jody Mariano with TSCA, who are going to present where we're at on the design, and then we'll talk about the next steps.
Perfect.
Thank you, Dan. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jody Mariano. I'm the Vice President of Design at TSCA Associates. I'm going to start off the presentation, and then Bob and Jim are here to address questions about engineering and such. So the area that we are -- I want to make sure I know how to do this. Did I just -- yeah, it worked. Okay. So we are looking at these spaces in and around the central portion of downtown Bartlett, highlighted here in orange, and those spaces are also highlighted here in green. So just to orient everybody, Main Street is running north-south. Does this point? Main Street's running north-south. Railroad Avenue is here. So we're looking at the spaces in and around the Depot Museum, this walkway that connects the Depot Museum to the metro station, which is here, and then also the Town Center Plaza here, as well as reconstructing the sidewalk from the Moore Brewing area all the way around to Village Hall, which is down here by the fire barn. So I'll walk you through each of the spaces, but just for orientation, these are the areas we're looking at. And I will say, too, it's such a great opportunity to look at not only the individual spaces, but how they get connected, because this really goes such a long way to improving the way that people experience and come into the downtown area. So the Depot Museum, some photographs are here. We've got pavement, we've got clipped hedges, we've got fencing and some site furnishings. In talking with staff, we understand that there is a desire to move away from clipped hedges and move towards native landscape plantings, which we will be recommending or will be showing you here, and also making better use of the pavement areas. So we've got such a wonderful amenity in the Depot Museum with the exhibits and the activities that they have planned there, that we can make better use of these big open spaces to allow people to sit and gather and to have small programs. Railroad Avenue, so this, these are the sidewalk areas. So this is that sidewalk area that connects to the metro station from the Depot Museum to the left, and again, to replace some of the hedged plantings and some of the trees that are no longer, don't have a very long life to them left, so to replace all of those underneath the wires with native landscaping. We have a lot of utilities in this area, so we're mindful of those things. And then the sidewalks that are down here by Moore Brewing, this is the recently reconstructed sidewalk, and so these are the existing sidewalks that would be reconstructed with concrete pavement and clay brick pavers, so we have sort of a continuous matched set of paving that carries you through downtown. And then, whoops, lastly, the Town Center Plaza area. This is the area that is just across the street here. We have unit pavers that are precast concrete. A lot of them are settling and not meeting the ADA requirements that we want to meet. We know that the fountain is in disrepair and needs to be replaced. There is a sculpture up on top here, which would be salvaged and provided back to staff. And there is also a lot of elements that we would be reusing, so things like the clock would stay in its place. The furnishings, we would be just relocating to other spots. We have several donor plaques and stones. Those would be protected and reused in the plaza, but generally, it's to clean up this area, make it more able to accommodate small groups and gathering spaces. Just to kind of take a step back, as far as the urban design theme, as I mentioned earlier, we want to create a series of attractive spaces for people to walk through and enter through from their cars, once they get out of their cars, to walk through the spaces on foot. And also, taking a look back at history, we know that Brewster's Creek and Winding Creek once flowed through downtown Bartlett. We saw this as an opportunity to help tell that story through landscape materials, but also could be told more specifically through signage, and then to honor the natural resources that, you know, were always here, so things like limestone creeks, wetlands, prairies, native plantings. So this is really intended to be specific to Bartlett, to really tell Bartlett's story and to make it beautiful and attractive as well. Okay, so I'm going to take you through each one. So this is the Depot Museum area. So again, this is the railroad. Here is the Depot Museum building. Here's Oak Avenue, and here's Railroad. We're really focused on this area on the south side of the tracks only, so you can see the walkways that kind of come through here. Those little boxes represent the pavers that are there today. It's kind of a lot of paving, and so the proposed plan is a little bit more curvilinear. We've carved out some spaces for picnic tables, for benches. These concrete walks are bordered with limestone outcroppings, native plantings. We have some existing drainage structures here and here, and so those would become rain gardens, places to filter the stormwater runoff to kind of come into those areas. And then we've got these little islands, which are just, you know, kind of islands of plantings and rock outcroppings to break up the pavement, also to provide places for people to sit casually, and if the museum or the village wanted to come back and add some interpretive signage to help tell some of those stories, those could be great places for that as well. The next section, this is the North Railroad Avenue sidewalk area, so we just left Depot Museum, which is here. Here's Oak Avenue. There's Railroad. We've got this very straight section of sidewalk. There's some ramping here that gets us access to the roadway for maintenance vehicles. We've got the platform here, and then the metro, you can just barely see the metro station is over here. We have a lot of overhead wires and a lot of utilities, but with that, we think there's an opportunity to make this more of a meandering, interesting walkway. So this is the proposed plan. So we've got a meandering walkway. It's a little bit wider to accommodate maintenance vehicles, and then it's surrounded, again, by landscape materials, rock outcroppings, a couple of benches. We've got rock outcroppings here that help make the changing grade where the ramping is to transition up to this platform. The Town Center Plaza, so we've turned north just to fit well onto the page, but the metro station is off here. We've got Main Street running the bottom of the screen. Here's Railroad Avenue, so Two Toots is right there. Here's the fountain. We've got a walkway that comes through here, a widened pathway here. There's quite a few great quality trees that we want to hang on to, so things like the existing spruce tree, the tall canopy shade trees, those would all be protected, but we would rework the paving and the plantings around those areas, so again, it has a little bit more of a curvilinear feel. So that, just for reference, the existing fountain is somewhere in this area. The holiday tree is here, and so we would have a walkway that kind of, you know, brings you through, if you were coming from Village Hall, for instance, you have the option to stay walking along Main Street divided by a parkway, or you can come in through here and have a walkway that takes you through. And it's split into two sections. So to retell that story about the naturalistic creeks that came through downtown, we would replace with another decorative water feature that's up here the north, and then on the south side of the walkway would be a dry creek bed. So that would be your decorative boulders with drainage structures that already exist there today, but would accommodate plantings and slow down the runoff with rain garden-type plantings and things like that. We've got a picnic table area up in here, so those would be picnic tables with covered sunshades. I'll show you some photos of those. Some benches are kind of placed throughout the pathways to give people a place to sit, formally on a bench or informally on landscape outcroppings. As far as this water feature goes, up here would be an upper basin that would be about three feet tall, three, four feet tall. It would have jets, and I'll show you some photos of that. It would cascade down to a low runnel that would be bordered on all sides with the outcropping, so it would sort of simulate a creek. And the way that the water would function is it would start here, it would cascade down into the runnel, and then from this point, it would just recirculate back to this area. So only this area that's blue would be water. Everything on this side of the walkway would be gravel and a decorative dry creek bed. This is a section that shows a little bit more information about that fountain, so this would be as if we were standing with our backs to Two Toots, looking up to Main Street. So on the right-hand side over here would be where the metro station is. So here is the raised section of the water basin. It would have fountain jets that would bubble up about three feet, and then it would cascade down as a waterfall feature into a low runnel that's just a couple inches high with outcroppings on all sides of it, and then it would cascade down again, and then it would recirculate back up. So you can see the clock, existing clock in the background, as well as the repositioned benches. And this would be our sidewalk, and on the other side of the sidewalk, this is where the bio swell, dry creek bed, and plantings would be located. Just some photos of the materials and products that we were anticipating. Native landscaping, we've been working closely with staff and the forester to select plantings that would be straight species natives, and we can also incorporate signage to help tell about the benefits of those great things, interpretive signage. Here is an example of the raised fountain basin with the jets, outcropping stones, and then all of the paving would be just like your sidewalks, concrete sidewalks with a tool joint pattern, could have, you know, jointing patterns that have an interesting shape to it, but this would be clean and accessible for folks that are either walking or in wheelchairs or with strollers. On the left-hand side, these are the Village Standard bench and trash receptacles that would be reused. Bike rack, we have the option to incorporate the Village logo into the bike racks. At our last staff meeting, we talked about these tables and chairs with the sunshade, and we haven't really talked through this yet, but we are offering two options. So this is an option that has seats with backs that are kind of more square, with a more kind of winged metal canopy. These are all powder-coated metal, so they could be powder-coated to match the color of the benches. And here's another option that's a little bit more contemporary with more kind of a pocket seat. So those are two options that we're looking into. As far as our next steps, tonight, we're obviously looking forward to hearing your comments. Next steps after this would be to go forward with permitting, and then in February, we're anticipating a design-build contract. That construction can start in the spring and be substantially complete by the winter of this year. That's all that I have. We're happy to answer any questions.
I would like to ask you one thing. I don't know if we were in Michigan or Wisconsin, I can't remember, but like in the town center area, they would play music, and during, you know, holiday time, they would play, you know, holiday music. Has there been any consideration of doing something like that, like specifically in the town center area?
You know, I don't know if we've talked about that. It's a really interesting idea. I know other communities that have done this do have to sort out, making sure that the musical choices are appealing to the wider public. Some people have different tastes of music, but it's a great idea, and we can certainly look into it.
Do you think there will be kids playing in the water? Like, is that the intention, or is it kind of blocked off?
It's an excellent question. I'm going to go back to kind of show a plan. So the fountain feature is intentionally designed to separate where people would be walking from the water. There would be these very large outcropping stones between where you'd be walking and the fountain, so it is certainly not designed for people to get in it.
Okay.
As far as construction goes, is that a project this size, is that typical from spring to winter? Can that be like?
Yeah, it is. I mean, I can start.
Time to do something like?
Sure. I will say, there's definitely efficiencies and scale to have one contractor build all of these projects at once, because what they would do, and Jim can speak to this, too, but what they would do is they would, you know, line up all their excavation and do all the excavation at once, and then they can get all of their concrete in at once. But I'll let you, go ahead.
Thanks, Jody. Jim Emilio with Chris Burke Engineering. So it is reasonable to expect this all to be done in one season. However, what would help facilitate that would be is if we move forward with a design-build delivery method. That helps us save some time in the bidding process. We would solicit price proposals from qualified, reputable contractors, so we can get those numbers quickly. We're also at a 60%, you know, plan set here, so we're far enough along that we could enter into a design-build contract. If you wanted to do the traditional design-bid-build, we would need to get that extra 40%. We would need to, you know, dot all the i's, cross all the t's. Right now, with this plan set, we have enough to build it, but if we went out to formal bid, open bid, you know, there's some more time involved in that. So we would save some time on the front end, and then also, you know, engaging that contractor that knows what they're doing, you know, that's had a lot of experience doing a specialized type project like this will help us expedite that and get it done. We've done projects like this in a lot of municipalities, and Bob can talk all night about some of the work we've done in Algonquin doing design-build for streetscapes. We've done them in several other villages as well. We found it's worked out very well for jobs like this.
Downtown Algonquin area is beautiful, no?
Yeah, it sure is.
One question I have is the wintertime, like, I think what we, didn't we have some issues with that fountain because of the water in the winter? Is there a way that we're going to make sure that we have minimal maintenance and be able to not have cracked pipes all the time and issues?
Yeah, it'll be drained and winterized for the winter, so there'll be, we're not going to try to heat it and keep it running or anything like that, but we'll be able to, the way it's set up, we'll be able to de-water it. There's a basin down at the south end where it recirculates back up. We'd be able to pull that out, pull the pump out, drain out the lines, so it should be good to go for the winter.
So the top part where the water's flowing through, when you're looking through the water, would it look similar to the dry creek bed with rock and stuff on the bottom, or is it just going to be concrete?
So the basin, these basins here would be concrete on the inside and then the decorative rock on the outside. So all of the equipment, just like Dan said, would be completely drained out, but then you would be left with a basin, like a concrete inside, a concrete box.
Okay.
That would only be at the topmost section, where it's three feet or so high. Everything down in here, that would be very low. That's that low runnel section. So that would look like a creek bed, but again, it would have a concrete bottom.
I think it would be interesting to see not just what looks like a concrete waterway. It'd be nice to see it, make it look like an actual creek on the bottom, or if you could put stones or something on the bottom.
You could line, you could be concrete and put gravel on top to make it same to the south.
Decorative gravel, something that looks like peat gravel.
Yeah, we would be able to do.
Yeah, there's a concrete form liner that we've been looking at that's used specifically for fountains like this that looks like pebbles, but achieves the same thing.
I think that would be better than just a chute with water running down it.
Could the actual bridge actually be a bridge, and we extend the water to the other side? Not fully, but to make it look like an actual bridge, not?
Yeah, no, it's a really good question. We actually started there. But as we were working with our fountain designer and knowing that we have to have, whoops, aw, man, sorry. This thing has a mind of its own. All right. So when it's winterized, we have to have a volume of water at the bottom of the basin, wherever that falls, that can hold all of the water that's above it, so that we can fully drain it and recirculate it, and it's just part of the hydrology of it. So if we were to do that and extend it below the bridge, we grew concerned about the potential for somebody getting stuck down there underwater. And not that it's very deep, but we felt that from a maintenance standpoint and a safety standpoint, we would be better off just keeping this as a regular walkway and letting the water, you know, just focus in this area here. If we were to extend the water all the way through here, I think that would substantially increase the cost of the project.
At one point, there actually was a bridge shown, and because the way it's set up, I think we still can make it look like a bridge, put railing up, make it look like a bridge, but technically, it won't be a bridge. So I think by putting a railing up on both sides and kind of just the feel of it, it'll be like it's a bridge, but you'll have water on one side, and it'll be a dry riverbed on the other side.
You can stand on one side of it, look at the creek. On the other side?
I mean, we can extend it further south, it's just cost-wise.
You can fish from one side of the bridge, Adam, but not the other side.
I just want to make sure I'm in the right corners. I just want it, you know, pleasing, you know?
Sure.
Just like, I think we should give that another look.
Is the fountain area big enough? Is the fountain area big enough for, so we're doing this whole Bartlett branding program, and if we wanted to make this a landmark or a destination where the kids could do Instagram photos, is the fountain large enough to get around it? I mean, could people stand, three, four people, brides, grooms?
Oh, sure.
Pictures, all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I mean, this is a really, so this is where your drinking fountain is today, near the, you know, the crosswalk is here, so there is a really wide sidewalk on this side and all the way around the fountain on this side and on this side, so certainly, people can stand. I mean, I can imagine that this area would be a lovely place to have those types of things.
Does the dry creek bed have functionality?
When it rains, yeah. So the dry creek bed will be, you know, slightly sloped so that it's a low point. We, again, we have these drainage structures that we're working with, so one here and one here, so everything is kind of pitched to drain. So when it rains, certainly, this would, you know, kind of, you know, get, you know, get water runoff coming through here, and it would be filtered through the landscape plantings and then terminate and go underground at that point, but it would, it would look like a creek, especially in the rain.
Currently, that's not a functioning space for?
Today?
Right now, current, no. Right now, people can actually walk through there, and it's not a big deal, but the new design, it's pretty much off limits. Is that what you're saying?
You could walk in there if you wanted to, but the pathway, the concrete pathway is around it, so on this side, around it, and on this side.
But it's not designed to have people walk through?
Correct.
Is that something that we want? Is that, do we want it? I don't know.
It kind of seemed like?
It seems like just wasted space. It's just like, oh, you're walking through and you're just looking at it, and it's not like usable space.
Like it's supposed, like it looks like natural when we have an actual nature preserve, you could go walk?
I think it kind of greens up the downtown, though.
So are there any flowers?
Adds a little bit more green and nature to the downtown area.
It's going to be native plantings along.
Yeah, all native plantings, so grasses and wildflowers that would be, you know, we want to keep them, you know, not taller than three feet. Generally, we want to have the planting so that there's nothing between three feet and, you know, six feet where the tree canopies are, so this is very open, but it's nice and lush below and then nice and lush above.
Good.
I do have a couple, just notes I just want to add. I like Ray's, our trusty Dany's, input on the music. Is the fountain themselves are going to be underlit, so you'll be able to see at night?
Yeah.
The amount of raised elevation of that, is there a ability to put the name Bartlett on there in metal or some sort of?
Oh, on the wall itself?
Wall itself?
Yeah, I think so. So, yeah, for sure. I mean, we could have, like, channelized stud-mounted letters.
I just didn't know if that was going to have enough elevation to do that.
Well, so, you know, if we were to do something like that, that was, you know, out on a major road, you'd want it to be kind of set where somebody who's driving can see it, but I think this is a much more pedestrian-oriented environment, so we don't necessarily have to have it that high, but we've done that before for other village centers, but certainly, that can be done. I mean, this is just going to have low, you know, lawn around it, so I would think if we did that, we would want that lettering to be kind of in this area, in this curve. I think that's a great idea.
Jody, could you talk a little bit about all the lighting changes we made the last time we met?
Oh, sure. So we, what we talked about had providing uplights to all trees and providing GFI outlets to all trees, so that we can have uplit trees, and then during holiday time, you could decorate not just the holiday tree, but you could decorate all of the trees if you want to.
That'd be nice.
It's one of the higher-traffic areas in Bartlett, so the signage would be good.
Yeah.
And I, my whole thought with the prom pictures and Instagram, I know Rosemont has the giant waterfall, which is nothing like this, but I know they charge a permit fee if you want to do your wedding photos in front of it. Not saying that that's what we want to do, but more of a landmark, more of a destination, part of our branding.
Is the three-foot, is there a reason it's just three-foot, or could it go higher to accommodate a sign if we wanted to do that?
I think we just want it to be?
I know it's aesthetically pleasing when it's a little lower. Is it to be used as a seat wall, I guess?
It's not to be used as a seat wall. Seat walls would typically be 16 to 20 inches above grade, but this is more just to be able to be, you know, if you were, I'm not a very tall person, but if somebody that was my height or maybe a little bit shorter can kind of get up close to it without having, and like, you don't want the height of the wall to be, I think, above your, you know, your shoulder or elbow. I think you want this to feel more human scale.
You get it, too, how you can't see the shot, this?
I was just curious.
Right?
I like the sign, but I don't know that we should put it on the rocks, like, somewhere else in the park.
The brick outline of our sidewalks, that's going to still maintain, like we did in front of Moore Brewing throughout the, okay.
So that was, the intent was to have that for all of the main sidewalks, but in these plaza spaces, because we have the outcropping stone, we were not intending to have the brick banding with the outcropping stone. It seemed like it was too much.
Is there anything part of this project that you see that you're going to get involved in it, and there's going to be a standstill, like a telephone pole in the way, or?
Oh, like?
Some sort of obstruction that, oh, we're going to have to stop construction for a month and figure this out?
That's why we have these guys. The engineers have done a pretty exhaustive topographic survey, so we know where all the above-ground and underground utilities are, and so it's all been designed for that. But also, you were trying to work with your utilities, so for instance, your existing drains, your existing lights, trying not to move things that have utility associated with it, like your clock, because that really kind of keeps our project more simple and less, less things to open up. Back to the light, the sign question, you know, I'm looking at, if you're coming in, mostly, a lot of people come in from Main Street, you know, to the south, and so I'm wondering, I'm looking at like the area in here, or, you know, an area here. I wonder if any of those could be potentials signage.
You answered my question on the electrical for the Christmas lights, I was going to ask that, but I do remember, there was a conversation at one point about one of the local sculpture artists having one of his things presented into this design. Is that still?
Lambert Lucietto offered a piece of his sculpture work. We're looking at more toward the depot for that location. We haven't nailed it down with Lambert yet, though.
Yeah, I just would like to?
It's going to be a bust of me, right? Scare everybody out of downtown.
One last question I have for you. If I understood correctly, this is completed by the end of 2025?
That's right.
That's amazing. That is absolutely amazing.
Well, and?
I lived long enough to see this.
You might not.
Oh, hi.
I just would like, once we narrow down a timeline? I just would like, once we narrow down a timeline, actually see a detailed timeline and make sure when construction starts.
It doesn't take forever.
It doesn't stop.
Yeah.
I don't want to be driving through downtown Bartlett and see no construction happening. Like, if our ducks aren't in a row, we shouldn't start. I don't want to be like, oh, we're waiting on brick, it's, there's a delay. We don't need, we don't need that in our downtown. So make sure everything is in stock, ready to go, and make sure construction doesn't stop, is, is my thing.
You know, we would, obviously, this is a very important project for the village, be an important project for us as well, and we would have all of our ducks in a row. I do have to give the caveat, though, there are always things that do come up. But we do coordinate with all the utility companies now in advance to iron out as much as possible. You never know when you put a shovel in the ground what you might find. But from what's on paper, you know, we've, as Jody had mentioned, we've accommodated and addressed all the utilities that are out there, so.
Yeah, and you guys have a, a good reputation, so good luck.
I just wanted to.
Mr. Mayor, that's all we have.
I just wanted to add a couple things. One thing we do still have to work out is with Metro. So we won't start construction until we make sure we have everything in line with them along the south side of the tracks. They are, we do have money coming from them as well for that portion, so we need to keep them in the loop anyway. They did commit, as you know, they're going to be doing the platform, eliminating the split platform. They did commit to matching what we do on the south side, on the north side, when they do the platform work. So that's great news. And then as far as steps moving forward, as I said, the plan is design-build. That doesn't mean we're not getting pricing, it just means we're, we're not opening it to any contractor. We're opening it up to qualified contractors that, that Christopher Burke has worked with on many other projects in other communities, very similar to this. So we've got qualified contractors, make sure it gets done.
Are you going to put an electric charging station?
Yeah.
Get out of here.
Yeah, Mr. President, that's all we have for this.
Thank you, Chairman Dany. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Dany, seconded by Trustee Laporte. Will clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Dany?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Gunskeen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Laporte?
We are adjourned.
It's going to be beautiful. You know that?
Yeah.